It's go.
Good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure to welcome you to this Zoom meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System. We appreciate everyone's interest in the board's business, the system's business, and we welcome you. At this time to begin our meeting, I'll recognize Dr. Ken Jackson, pastor of Trinity United Baptist Church in Prattville. Pastor Jackson, we're so thankful to have you here today with us and welcome you.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here with you and in your work that you do. I went through the website and looked and saw where each of you are very active in the business world and also in this role. And I talked to Mr. Thompson the other day, and I told him for the next 45 minutes, I just wanted to share a few thoughts. And I won't take that long. But I do want to share a few thoughts with you. And I saw that many of you had listed on your information about your faith affiliation. And I just want to speak just a moment about that. St. Jerome said that baptism, when we were baptized, is our ordination into ministry. Whether you are a layperson working in car dealership, entrepreneur, hospital setting, whatever, you are in ministry. I believe in the priesthood of all believers. And we are all ministers in what we do. And sometimes people look and think that ministry is reserved to pastors. Here at Trinity, we have 478 ministers at our church, and I'm just one of them. But I want to talk about the work that we do and how we make a difference, because so often we get caught up, especially during this time of COVID, it's made us reassess everything that we're doing. And it's been a challenge. I know it has been for y'all in the hospital setting and work. It has been for us here at the church. I just want to take a snapshot of the look of Jeremiah, the prophet Jeremiah, and just ask you this question. Why would God take the longest book of the Bible? Now, you may be thinking Psalms is the longest book of the Bible, but Jeremiah has about 4,000 more words than the whole book of Psalms. But why would God take the longest book of the Bible to tell about a failed prophet who spoke to people who never listened to him? For 40 years, Jeremiah preached, and no one listened to him. Don't you think he got dejected? Don't you think he felt like, why am I doing this? Why am I pressing on every day to it? And in fact, at the very end, Jeremiah was kidnapped by his own people and carted out of Israel into Egypt. They just, it was a failed life, but yet God chose to tell the story. We feel like that sometimes in our lives. And I think for us, we have to go back to what St. Jerome said, and to see that our lives, our work, is an ordination into ministry, what we're called to do. There's more to life than working, paying bills, and then we die. There's got to be more than that. I think in the book of Jeremiah, it's telling us that God is asking us to be faithful in adversity, in the midst of the everyday things that we do. So I want to encourage you, just in your work with the community college on the Board of Directors, I want to encourage you in your work and what you do every day, that you see that as your role in ministry. Again, God doesn't need more ministers. He's got enough of us. What he needs is more Christian businessmen. He needs more Christian businesswomen, needs leaders and people who are going to be ethical and moral in their lives and in their work. So I just want to encourage each of you this morning. The work that you do is important, but the way that you live is even more important. And so I thank you that there is a God-centered group of people who are giving guidance to the community colleges here in the state of Alabama. And thank you for this opportunity to be with. I'd like to pray for y'all as you start your business meeting and give thanks for the work that you do. So if you would, join me in prayer. Father, I just, I thank you for men and women who serve and who take time out of the busy schedules. It is taking time from something else that they could be doing. And fathers, we go through life, we realize that we are called to invest ourselves into things that are meaningful, into people, into organizations, into circumstances and situations that we're called to be ministers. And I give you thanks for these women and men who come and give of their time, give of their resources, and give of their talent. And I pray that you continue to bless them, not only in their work as the Board of Trustees, but more so in their lives as godly examples, to be faithful in the midst of adversity, to be people of integrity when the world says, take the easy road. And so I give you thanks and pray, Lord, that you continue to bless them and give them wisdom and discernment and guidance in all that they do. And it's in the name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Dr. Jackson, thank you so much for those words of encouragement and that prayer today. We appreciate it so very much. There is a flag in the chancellor's conference room. If we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Present.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Present.
Mr. Matthew Wood?
Present.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Present.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Present.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Present.
Mr. Jeffrey Newman? Governor Kay Ivey. Chairman Thompson, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of today's agenda. Board members have received this in advance of today's meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion from Milton.
Then a motion to approve the agendas are second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any changes to the agenda from the board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. And we'll do this by voice vote. If there's no objections for these first items for the agenda in the minutes. All those in favor of approval of today's agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed to approving the agenda today? The agenda is approved unanimously. Section five is the approval of last month's regular meeting minutes, September 9th, 2020. The board members, once again, have received this in advance of today's meeting and had a chance to review the minutes of last month's meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion on the minutes.
Still moved.
Motion by Mr. McAnally. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the approval of the minutes of the September 9th, 2020 meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed to approval of the minutes? The minutes are approved unanimously. Section six, Ms. Wilkins, is there anyone signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
No one signed up for public comment. Section seven, 7A1. We will do a voice vote on all these items of business. 7A1 is a recommendation to approve the allocation for fiscal year 2021, industry certification initiative funds for existing industry training programs for the Alabama Community College System. This was on last month's works. Is there a motion?
Motion by
Motion by Mr. Davis. And the second was
Joe.
Mr. Smith? There's been a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Please call the roll, Ms. Wilkins.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Aye.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Matthew Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Aye.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 7A2, allocation of 2021 industry certification initiative funds for the career coach program for the Alabama Community College System. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call the question. This is allocation for 2021 for the career coach program for the Alabama Community College System. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Aye.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Matthew Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Aye.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 7A3, allocation of 2021 industry certification initiative funds for the Alabama Community College System. Is there a motion?
Motion, Joe.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Aye.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Matthew Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Aye.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 7A4, mine training facility renovation and expansion, time extension for Bevill State Community College. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Ms. Wilkins, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Aye.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Matt Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Aye.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 7A5, this is the purchase of loaner laptop computers for the Alabama Community College System. This has come straight to the board meeting. This CARES Act money. Is there a motion?
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. McAnally, second by Mr. Davis. Mr. McAnally is Chair of the Finance Committee. Do you have any thing to add on this?
Yes, sir. I would say that the full Audit Finance Committee had an opportunity to meet with system personnel. We went through all of these purchases. Some of them are quite significant. I would just make one point on the loaner laptop purchases. Because of the volume that we were buying, we were able to get a significantly reduced price. And this is a grand opportunity for us to achieve this, actually acquire all this equipment. There has been a tremendous amount of work done by Ben Rosenbeck and his team, and I just want to say thank you to them. I think they have worked around the clock to pull these acquisitions together. We were granted, I think, about $20, $27 million, and I think we probably have over three quarters of that already obligated at this point, with equipment ready to be delivered. So thank you to their efforts, and I think this is an great opportunity all around.
Thank you, Mr. McAnally. And for those listening, in order for the system to take advantage and fully appropriately utilize the CARES Act money, it has to be spent. The purchase has to be made by December 31st. So some of these items will come directly to the board meeting, but not before being fully reviewed by the Board Finance Committee. And with the help of the chancellor, the chancellor's staff, and the individual institutions, this process seems to be working quite well in affording this accountability and transparency. We have a motion in a second. Yeah, Mr. McAnally?
I would just add, too, that the haste in this is also related to our obligation and desire to follow state bid law and being able to publish these solicitations in the time required by statute. So we're meeting all of those requirements for state bid law, and we appreciate the opportunity to bring these directly to the board.
Excellent. Thank you for adding that. Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second for the purchase of loaner laptops, computers for that community college system. If there's no further discussion, we will go to a roll call vote. Ms. Wilkins?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Aye.
Ms. Susan
Aye.
Mr. Matthew Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Chris, Ms. Crystal Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Aye.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 7A6, is an upgrade of technology infrastructure for Lawson State Community College. Is there a motion?
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second by Crystal.
Second by Ms. Brown. Discussion?
I would just say that these, this is a second phase of a plan that had been put in place for quite some time, and the opportunity to use monies in the near term has come to Lawson. This is related to work that is technology-related, and because we are just one of many institutions across the country that are spending CARES Act for the same purposes, we felt that it was critical that we get this to the board directly from the Finance Committee because of the necessity of just trying to get an order placed, to get in line, to get equipment, and get this work done.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. I'd also like to just thank Dr. Anthony, her staff, and Ben Rosenbrock for, again, pulling all the information together for us to review in a very timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. McAnally. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those will do the roll call vote for the upgrade of technology infrastructure at Lawson State Community College. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Aye.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Aye.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 7A7, is purchase of personal protective equipment for Lawson State Community College. Is there a motion?
Motion by Milton.
Motion by Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods. Discussion?
This is similar situation, Mr. Chairman, in that obviously the need for PPE is significant, that funds available, opportunity to acquire them, and in some cases, a challenge to get them. So we wanted to get this acquisition started as soon as possible also.
Thank you, Mr. McAnally. Any further discussion? If not, we'll go to the question, the purchase of personal protective equipment for Lawson State Community College. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Aye.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Matthew Wood?
Aye.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Aye.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We're into Section 8, Executive Legal and Public Information. Item 8A1, we have a very special item here. And President Carlicks, if it's okay, the board will act on this. And then would, or would you like to go ahead? Do we have a resolution?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to read that? We'll have board action. And then we've got the Gudger family. We're so honored to have each and every one of them with us today. But I give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's so good to be with all of you today. I wish that you could be here with us, Mr. Chairman Thompson, Vice Chair Davis, Chancellor Baker, and fellow members of the board. We're on the 12th floor of the James Bailey Center for Commerce, and we have a 360-degree view of our beautiful 300-acre campus. And the Gudger family is here with us to celebrate this day. And they're able to look out among the campus that their father and grandfather helped to grow during his more than two decades of experience here. I also don't want to leave out the matriarch of this family, Ms. Dot Gudger. In addition to Dr. Garland Gudger, who served us for so long, Ms. Dot Gudger, the matriarch, and his beautiful spouse, was a long-serving member of the Wallace State faculty. As a matter of fact, she was the very first business education instructor employed here and spent many years here. She is with us via Zoom. But if I may introduce the family to you today, we have Senator Garland Gudger. I'm going to ask you to stand, although it might cut your hair down, along with other family members. The Senator Garland Gudger, his beautiful wife, Heather Gudger, son, Trip Gudger, and Pierce Gudger. And then we also have another daughter, Joy Barker, and her children, Brady Barker, Victoria Barker, Alexandria Barker, and Sarah Catherine Barker. And then joining us via Zoom, we also have Jill Gudger Howell, her spouse, Mike Howell, and the matriarch of this family, Dot Gudger, who couldn't be with us today for quarantine. And then also Mary Barker, another grandchild, who's taken the PSAT test today and couldn't be here. So thank you, Gudger family, for being with us today. I'd like to present this resolution for your consideration today. And then I'd also like to give Senator Garland Gudger an opportunity to respond on behalf of the family to the board, if I may. So this is a resolution naming the Wallace State Community College Student Center in honor of Dr. Garland Gudger, Sr. Whereas Dr. Garland E. Gudger, Sr., was Wallace State Community College's first dean, appointed as dean of students in 1976, and charged with directing admissions, financial aid, counseling, student activities, and housing. And whereas Dr. Gudger served as an advocate for students during his 20 years as dean of students, and was passionate about student involvement, physical health and well-being, and the benefits of sports to a student body. And whereas, in his first year as dean, the college added its first athletic program, men's basketball, in 1976. In subsequent years, Dr. Gudger advocated for the addition of women's basketball, baseball, softball, track, volleyball, and golf, which positioned Wallace State as a leader in the Alabama Community College System athletics. And whereas, Dr. Gudger is also remembered by many for the large intramural sports program he put together with students involving hundreds in basketball and flag football. And whereas during his tenure, Dr. Gudger rarely if ever missed a game at Wallace State. And whereas he helped students with everything from personal dilemmas to financial problems, including mentoring and modeling kindness and a strong work ethic, in some cases, he generously personally funded the student's college career. And whereas in his spare time, Dr. Gudger also began rescuing and restoring architectural objects and antiques, a passion that grew into the thriving, family-owned, nationally-known business, Southern accent. And whereas, he was named Outstanding Dean of the Alabama Junior College Deans Association, a group that he founded early in the community college system's history. And whereas, prior to joining Wallace State, Dr. Gudger served as a teacher and coach at West Point, Fairview, and Coleman High Schools, and was inducted into the Coleman County Sports Hall of Fame in 2014. His coaching years were influential as he loved his players, and many of them went on to become coaches themselves. And whereas, after his coaching days were over, in addition to using many of those same skills to encourage Wallace State students, he was always a presence at all of his children's and grandchildren's sporting events, no matter when or where, coaching from his chair and at the end of the court or behind a fence. And whereas, Dr. Gudger was a graduate of Castle Heights Military Academy, where he was selected as an All Mid-South Football Player and earned a football scholarship to Tennessee Technological University, where he was a member of the Ohio Valley Conference Championship Team. And whereas, he received his bachelor's and master's degrees from Tennessee Technological University in Health and Physical Education, and later his PhD in Junior College Administration, he was awarded the Flavia Smith Outstanding Alumni Award from his major department. And whereas, after a lifetime dedicated to education, Dr. Gudger retired from Wallace State in 1996. He continued to promote Wallace State, Wallace State students, and Wallace State athletics throughout his life, attending events and encouraging students to enroll, succeed, and achieve rewarding lives and careers. And whereas, Dr. Gudger garnered the respect and admiration of everyone with whom he worked, a beloved role model for Wallace State student body and community at large, he was a humanitarian and an engaging, generous, and influential leader in education, in business, and in the community. And whereas, to honor Dr. Gudger's leadership and impact at Wallace State, former Representative Jeremy Oden established the Dr. Garland Gudger, Sr. endowed scholarship through the Wallace State Future Foundation. Future Foundation. And whereas, Dr. Gudger's legacy continues to influence thousands of students and alumni of Wallace State Community College. And whereas, the chancellor of the Alabama Community College System recommends this action, now therefore be it resolved that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees hereby recognizes and honors Dr. Garland E. Gudger Senior for his contributions to this community and to Wallace State Community College by naming the Student Center as the Dr. Garland E. Gudger Senior Student Center, adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System this 14th day of October 2020. Board members, I would like to introduce to you Senator Garland Gudger Senior, Junior, representing the Gudger family.
On behalf of the Gudger, Barker, and Howell families, we are honored to be here today. Chairman Thompson, Board of Directors, Chancellor Baker, Dr. Carlowitz, and our Wallace State family. This is such a wonderful day of my father and the legacy of my father. He loved this, the junior college system, and especially Wallace State Hensel. We have so many memories of us growing up in the Student Center, my sister and I, from getting a sandwich in the little plastic container that Woody would give us, an egg sandwich with toast and mayonnaise, and not only would I eat one, I'd always go back for a second, which Woody would give to me. But my father would take me over there, and it was a family event when we would come. I seldom get to talk about my father because it's not a month goes by since his passing that someone doesn't come into our store and tells us a story about my father. Whether he paid for someone's tuition that no one knew about, that was able to go through college, and without my father, they weren't able to finish school and become a better person. Without my father encouraging someone to stay on the athletic team, trying to get them a scholarship, they would have dropped out and went back home and gotten the same business that they shouldn't have been in from there, besides them coming to school. The issues that my father faced and the issues that he created to make people better, a better quality of people, in my eyes, and the people that come into us to tell us about our father, made my father a giant to me. Not only was he a big, barrel-chested man and worked out every day, but he was a huge man as far as, as they say, we step on the shoulders of giants to be where we are today. He trained us to be leaders, and that's what we are, my sisters and myself, and my family, and my nieces, and my sons. But I'm going to share just one small story of when I came downstairs in our house, it was around 1985, he was at the kitchen table, had a wooden round table with a fireplace behind it. And something had jumped into my head at the top of my forehead, and I said, Dad, if you could have anything that you wanted, what would you ask God for? And he didn't answer me at first. He had his cup of coffee, and I just thought he forgot about it. So I ate my cinnamon toast, and then he ended up saying, before you leave, I'm going to answer your question. And my, my answer is, it's not what I would want, but it's how it was given to me. And this didn't strike me until I was just looking screen and seeing all of our family around me, because his answer was, I would not take it from me. I would pass it to you, to your sisters, to your mother, and in the future, because I was young, grandchildren. My father had a vision of legacy and what that meant, and he stood strong in the light of integrity and had character. He gave every person that he came in contact with the same time, the same, whatever the need where he met them, but at the same point, he put a boundary of what those needs were. And trust me, if you step one pinky toe over that boundary, you would feel it very quickly. But I'm thankful on behalf of our families that we're here today, because this of what you're adopting today gives all of us a visual reminder to continue to be at the level of where my father, their grandfather, wanted us to be, and hopefully this community. We love Wallace State Hensel, my family loves Wallace State Hensel. We have always enjoyed the junior college system, and I thank you to all the Board of Directors for allowing us this opportunity in our life to honor our father and fulfilling his wish that you have given it to his children and grandchildren by having his name on the side of the Student Center. So thank you so much. We appreciate you allowing us to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Gudger. The board will go ahead and take action. Then we have some more comments from the board and from you. Is there a motion on the resolution?
Some.
Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second by Milton.
Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, if there's no objection, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the resolution for Garland Gudger Senior to name the Student Center for him at Wallace State Community College Hensel signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And Dr. Carlicks, do you have anything else to add?
Thank, thank you very much.
I just want, on behalf of the board, and other board members may have some other comments, the, the legacy, the body of work that Garland Gudger Senior left, I, I just would, I, I hate to think what our community college system would be without individuals like that all over the state, but his was quite unique. It was a labor of love, a lifetime of service, and we thank you, Senator Gudger. We thank the entire Gudger family for the support that you give to the community college system and to Wallace State Hensel. It, it's just beyond words what it means to all of the board members.
I'd just like to say that this is a wonderful tribute to an outstanding gentleman and beloved member of the Wallace State Hensel family, and the world needs, and certainly our community college system, needs more people like Dr. Garland Gudger Senior. And I am so happy to see that Student Center bear his name. I thank you all for being with us today, and certainly appreciate the legacy that Dr. Gudger leaves behind.
Anyone else? Well, it's just been an honor for the board to, to do this. Anyone else with comments? Seeing none, thank you again for, for y'all, for the entire family wanting to participate in this. It means a lot to the board. We're somewhat hampered by the pandemic and this remote meeting, but it means so much having the Gudger family to participate in this, and it's just an honor for us to, to have you be a part of our meeting today. Thank you again. Item 7A2 is a proposal for technology infrastructure upgrade at Wallace State Community Council. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Discussion. There being no discussion, we'll move to a vote. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Wilkins?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
John said he can see and hear us. He sent me a text, and I think he has a yes.
Okay. Ms. Susan Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Matthew Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Aye.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
I have Mr. Mitchell's yes as well. Motion carries unanimously. We'll go to Section 9, Personnel. Chancellor Baker?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have hosted the vacancy for president at Gadsden State. We have gone through a number, the number of applications. We've selected, senior staff here in the office selected those to be interviewed. We went through the interview process. Two of our board members participated in that interview process along with other people in this office. And I'm excited and happy today to let you know that we, I want to make a recommendation that the board approved, a person to fill the vacancy of president at Gadsden State Community College. We've had a lot of conversation, and I think the interview demonstrated that we have selected a person who will bring, bring a level of energy, thoughtfulness, and planning, and just pure love for the school and for the community to that school. So I'd like today recommend Dr. Kathy Murphy as president of Gadsden State Community College. Her contract, we would predict to be effective January 1, because she has an obligation to her board, which she wants to fulfill, and we want good relations there. So she will proceed to start gathering information and working and be ready to go full on January 1. So I'd like, Nikita, are you available? I think we're having some connection problems here, but Nikita, I'll go ahead and explain to you. Kathy?
Yes, sir. I'm here. Can everybody hear me?
Okay. Yes, now. Okay, go ahead and go through the resume.
Okay. Good morning. Dr. Kathy L. Murphy is a native of Greenville, Alabama. Her career has spanned almost the full spectrum of K-12 and higher education. She has served as a classroom teacher, a principal, assistant college professor, and a school superintendent. Dr. Murphy earned a doctorate and a master's degree from Auburn University. She earned a second master's degree and an educational specialist's degree in educational leadership from Auburn University at Montgomery. She earned her undergraduate degree at Troy University, an active education leader at the community, state, and national levels. Dr. Murphy frequently speaks at conferences and conventions on education matters. Dr. Murphy is most proud of her daughter, Caitlin Connor, who is classically trained opera singer who studied in New York City.
With that, I'd like to introduce to the board Dr. Murphy and recommend that we employ her as president of Gadsden State College.
Board, we have a recommendation from Chancellor Baker to fill the presidency of Gadsden State Community College with Dr. Kathy Murphy. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the chancellor's recommendation.
Motion by Matt Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Both those trustees were in on the process. Any discussion?
I, I'd just like to make a comment, Mr. Chairman. I, I was very pleased with the process, with the strong number of applicants for the position at Gadsden State. I thank all of them for their interest in that position, and also want to thank our HR department and the chancellor for bringing together a strong and capable group of applicants to the interview committee. And I'm very excited about the leadership that Dr. Murphy will provide to the Gadsden State community, and I do believe that she will be a tremendous asset for the, the system as well. So I fully support this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Any other comments or discussion from the board?
I had the pleasure of also being on that committee, and I would just second what Mr. Woods said. It's a great opportunity, great candidate, and Dr. Murphy, we're very glad to have you.
Any other comments or discussion from the board? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. We have a recommendation from Chancellor Jimmy Baker to fill the presidency at Gadsden State Community College with Dr. Kathy Murphy. And at this time, Ms. Wilkins, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell?
We have a yes from Mr. Mitchell.
Ms. Susan Foy?
Yes.
Mr. Matthew Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote to confirm Dr. Kathy Murphy as the new president of Gadsden State Community College. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd give Kathy an opportunity to speak.
Absolutely. Dr. Murphy?
Thank you so much, Chair Thompson, and, and also to Chancellor Baker, to all of the Board of Trustees. I am absolutely delighted to serve at Gadsden as the president. I am looking forward to moving there and learning more about Gadsden. I already have lots of thoughts and ideas, but certainly need to get there first and, and, and learn the ropes and to hear from others. But it is absolutely my delight, my honor, to serve in this capacity. I was up at 4 o'clock this morning, just anxious for this moment in time, and so my passion is that of, of people, of students, whether those are young students or older students. My passion is also that of education, and that's where there are, a student is seeking a K through 12, a two-year, a four-year, looking for a certificate or looking for credentials. I just love supporting individuals who are seeking that education. So again, thank you so much. My, my privilege to, to receive your support, and I am absolutely full of energy and ready to go. So thank you for the privilege.
Wonderful. Dr. Murphy. Chancellor, do you have anything else for us?
No, that's it. Other than, I have provided you a pretty aggressive schedule of filling vacancies between now and Christmas. So you'll be hearing from us as we go forward, and most, all of you, I think, are scheduled to participate in some of that. So I'm, I'm hoping that a lot of things fall in place between now, so that when we start a new semester, I want to start with some more presidents and positions.
Chancellor Baker, thank you for that timeline, and it's so well organized, and, and the way you presented it to the board. Thank you for that. It's very clear, and we're just especially excited about this, this latest appointment of Dr. Murphy at Gadsden State. Item 10, committee reports. Are there any, any committee reports?
Chancellor, I mean Chairman Thompson, before you move forward, did Items 8A for general liability insurance and cyber liability insurance, was that not on the agenda?
Thank you for, thank you for mentioning that. Those were not ready, with quotes, and were removed from the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
But thank, thank you for asking about that, Mr. Davis. Are there any committee reports?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that we, we do have four policies that we'll be reviewing in the work session, but we have worked with Vice Chancellor Susan Price and her team, as well as Mr. O'Brien, to come up with a schedule for policies through the end of the year. So look for those to be coming through our work sessions and so forth. So we just appreciate the policy committee, myself, Matt, and Susan, the help with that. So.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Appreciate y'all's hard work and, and, and that of the chancellor and the chancellor staff on this. I know it's been a lot to take, take in. Any other committee reports?
We have nothing further from what it finance.
I just appreciate all the committee chairs and the committee members for working hard. This This, it, it's just been great working with this board. Every member is engaged. Every committee chair is engaged. And forgive me for touting our, our horn a little bit, but it's, it's just nice to see the involvement from all the board members. Our next, we'll convene into the work session among, following the adjournment of this regular meeting. Once again, thank you to the Gudger family. We thought, we appreciate your support so much. And you're a big part of why it's called the Community College System. And it's because of the community there. It just means so much to all of us and to the Wallace State Council and to our system. Thank you again for being here today. We'll convene for our work session very shortly upon this adjournment. And then our next regular meeting will be November 10th, 2020. Anything else from the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Okay. There's no objection. We'll go straight into the, to the work session. The first item is our 2021, or the board's 2021 board meetings and work session schedule. Any questions from the board on that? If you have any questions or concerns that follow up, don't hesitate to voice those if necessary. Item two is recommendation regarding policy 601.04. Ms. Brown?
Um, I don't know. Mr. O'Brien is going to talk about these at all?
It, it was my plan.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Brian, O'Brien, you have a question?
Chairman Thompson, if, if, with, with your permission, I would like to address items two, four, and five together because they are all related to revisions to regulations that were issued earlier this year by the United States Department of Education as they relate to the handling of sexual harassment complaints under Title IX.
Yes, sir. Proceed.
The a, as I stated, the, the U.S. Department of Education issued new regulations relating to sexual harassment under Title IX earlier this year. There was an internal consensus that the, the best method of bringing the board's policies into compliance with the new regulations was to create a standalone policy for sexual harassment. In order to accomplish that goal, two existing policies of the board of trustees would require revision. Those policies being policy 601.04 relating to harassment and policy 620.02 relating to employee complaints. The revisions to 601.04 and 20.02 in effect remove most of the references in those policies to sexual harassment. And sexual harassment is addressed in new policy 20.03. Included in your packets are the revised versions of 601.04 and 60, 620, I'm sorry, 60, 620.02, along with redline versions of the existing policies. Also included in the packet is the new policy 620.03 relating to sexual harassment complaints. And we, what we have attempted to do was to take a very simple approach with regard to the new policy 620.03 and directing the colleges to adopt a sexual harassment complaint procedure that complies with the new regulations issued by the U.S. Department of Education. Does anyone have any questions with regard to the proposed revisions to 601.04 and 620.02? Does anyone have any questions regarding the new policy on sexual harassment, 620.03? Chairman Thompson, I'll move on to item number three, which is another proposed revision to a board policy, that being 602.02, that is the posting and hiring policy. And the, the change made in that policy was to add the language, "All vacancies involving jobs which are supervisory, managerial, or newly created shall require posting of at least 14 calendar days." That language appeared in the chancellor's procedure as it currently exists. The revision adds that language to the policy itself, which places the policy in express compliance with the posting statute found in Alabama Code Section 16-22-15. Does anyone have any questions regarding the proposed revision to 602.02?
I don't see anything, Mr. O'Brien, so.
Sounds like we lost him.
No, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, good. Okay. All right. I don't think there's anything for the board on that item. And that concludes what you're covering, David?
Yes, sir. That, that covers, that covers the four policies.
Okay, very good. Okay. Facilities? Ed?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Ed, excuse me a second.
Yes, sir.
Back up on number four, employee complaints. Make sure that is reviewed. There was a federal law, probably known as the Speak Up Law. Make sure we're not separating those between the federal mandate and our employee complaint mandate.
Will do.
Anyone else? Mr. Wall.
Good morning, board. Wallace Community College Dothan is presenting today and will be requesting approval next month for a renovation to their Learning Resource Center at their main campus. This is a 14,000 square foot building that was originally built in 1965. It has had no upgrades to that building since it was originally constructed. The anticipated scope of this project includes reconfiguring the layout, upgrading the finishes, upgrading the furniture, and upgrading the technology. We're not taking it all the way to the frame, but pretty close. It's a complete interior renovation of the project, of the building, excuse me. This project is scheduled to bid next Tuesday, October 20. And so our anticipation is being able to bring an action item to the board in November that includes the actual contract amount resulting from that bid. Can you go to the next two slides, please? The Learning Resource Center is shown in the yellow box. It is directly across from Wallace Dothan's new health science facility. Next slide, please. The anticipated cost for this project includes a construction cost of 2.1 million with a total budget of 2.7 million. If you're doing the math, 2.1 million for 14,000 square feet comes up to about $145 per square foot. This compares favorably to other recent renovation projects in this area. To give you a point of reference, we're paying around 230 to 250 per square foot for new construction. So this is a good value project for the system. This project has been presented to the board, facilities committee, and it's with their concurrence, so we're presenting it to the full board. I'll be happy to answer any questions the board might have about this product.
Chairman Thompson, I'd like to say that I know the building committee had reviewed this, but I've also spoke to Dr. Young about this and reviewed this with her.
You have any other thoughts, John, besides that? You're okay?
Ed, I know they're going to check for mold, so.
You can count on that, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
Ed, let me know if you need some help inspecting mold. I know what it looks like down here at the coast.
If you got any free time, but I heard you're pretty tied up right now, Mr. Smith.
I'm trying to stay in this lane. Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wotley. Item seven. Industry certification initiative funds.
Good morning. This is Barry May. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
The following are for your consideration. This was based on the recommendations of the workforce council, as well as our sector expert committee, and their feedback. Based on that, we have three grants that we would like to propose for Bevel State Community College. The first one being the purchase of an HVAC mini heat transfer for their air conditioning and refrigeration program at their Summington campus. They had recently requested not only that, but a variable refrigerant system. Based on the sector expert committee, we are recommending partial funding for, to cover the HVAC mini split. The Bevel's current mini split trainer is an older unit and does not represent the technology that the mini splits that are being installed today currently, currently have. And so this would allow them the capability to complete that training and provide the skills necessary to support in their region. Um, the, the second for Bevel is the purchasing of nursing beds and simulators for their nursing program for the Jasper campus. It's just a note, this will be the first update to the nursing lab equipment in 10 years. This grant, we were recommending fully funding for the amount of 42,469, so. And third for Bevel is the purchase of two trucks for their CDL program at their Summington campus. They currently have two trucks that are approximately 20 years of old that these will be replaced. And this will allow them to continue to support that, the transportation industry with this CD. And so we are recommending fully funding that particular grant. And the, the last two for Calhoun, as well as Northwest Shoals, these are grants that are part of our Department of Labor Scaling Apprenticeship. It's representing matching funds that we've committed to for those particular grants in the support of the FAME AMT programs at both of those campuses. I'd like to, questions that you may have at this time?
Any questions for Barry May?
None for me.
Barry, just, just thank you for tweaking the process. I feel a whole lot more comfortable the way it's being reviewed and implemented. And thank you for your leadership and the keys.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate all the work that, that you all do as well.
Seeing no further discussion on item seven, anything else to come before the board for the work session today? Okay. Well, board, thank you for your participation and attendance. And staff, Mandy and David, thank you. And Donna, thank you for your coordination for this board meeting. It makes things go so much smoother with all your help. Seeing nothing further, we will stand adjourned on this work session. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you.